Thanks for asking.
I'm going to call the meeting into order. I'm going to announce and start the meeting that we will be going into executive session. Actually, we'll be going into executive session twice this evening at the end of the meeting pursuant to KRS 61-8101B, deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency when publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property. The second executive session will be pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, which is discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, dispo or dismissal of an individual employee or a member or student, and KRS 61.8101C, which is discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. We'll be doing those at the end of tonight's meeting. So first item on the agenda, we typically recognize individuals who are here, so I'd like to call on Scout Master Michael Thomas of Troop 147. Thanks, they're right there here this evening.
Good evening. We're here to, my grandson's doing his first class requirement to attend a council meeting of the government agency, which is this one, and also it'll be part of his citizenship and nation merit badge. And he's, hopefully it'll be the third generation Eagle Scout.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Next item we have to square in, I'll call Chief Cresson to introduce our new police officer that will be squared in this evening.
So I'd like to introduce Officer John White. John was raised in Paris, Kentucky, graduated from Lexington Catholic High School. After high school, he joined the United States Marine Corps and attained the rank of corporal before he was honorably discharged. Officer White then started his policing career with KVE, which is the Kentucky Vehicle Enforcement, and he was in Region 7, which is in London, Kentucky. During his career with KVE, he served in several different assignments. He was in the Highway Interdiction Unit. He was a Sergeant Firearms Instructor, Unit Commander, and he was also the Region 9 Commander with KVE. In 2008, he joined the Louisville Metro Police Department, and he was in Division 4, which is the busiest division for LMPD, and he also, actually I was his commander in that division at one point. He then transferred to Metro Narcotics and was assigned to Major Case in the Interdiction Unit where he remained until he retired from Louisville Metro. In addition to what I've mentioned, Officer White comes to us here at BPD as a DRE, which is a Drug Recognition Expert, a Certified Firearms Instructor, a Glock and Armor, and also a firearms instructor. So Officer White is also married for 20 years, congratulations on that, and has two beautiful daughters. So we're really excited to have him join us here at BPD.
Officer White, if you'd join me up front here, I'll square in and it will be an opportunity to address the area here. So if you would raise your white hand. And I, John White, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I being a citizen in this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. Chief Cresson's introduction of Officer White speaks for itself. We're, you know, really happy and pleased to have someone with his background and his training that can join our department and hit the ground running, and so we look forward to your service to our community and just want to welcome you. And then if you'd like to have a few words, we'd like to hear them.
Sure. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me this opportunity tonight. It's wonderful working in a city that is so friendly and welcoming of you. I enjoy that we have such a strong command at the police department and such a wonderful officers to work with. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, I'm going to try to help a couple other guests that we have in the audience tonight that are not usually here, so we're trying to keep you all to the end of the agenda. I think I'm going to move a couple items a little forward on the agenda. So I'd like to call on Debbie Ables, who's here with the Henrytown Pride. She's going to talk about a possible sign request to feature that effort that's going on in that part of town. Debbie, if you'd like to address the council.
Thank you all very much for letting me be here. We've had some great support from you all already along with Chief Press. They've been wonderful to drive by and kind of help us with some of the elements that's down there. And honestly, we have 31 homes, we know for a fact, that have totally addressed their frontage and their garden area and all like that. We started a little small group and went around door to door and hand-delivered some master gardeners, had provided us some plantings, and Robbie Smith at the Extension Office had been gracious, and then we were able to get a benefactor out of Louisville to do the same. And to our amazement, we were asked to be on the garden tour this last year. We really figured three years out, we'd be ready for them, so we created what we called a drive-by, and with that, one neighbor saw another one working on it, and it started, you know, branching through, and it's done really, really well. We're having our first potluck this Sunday down at the community park and have gone through the details that were given to us by Rochelle and Gary and Amber on what we needed to do to request a sign for down there. We're hoping that we could have something eventually down there where the sign is for the community park, and we talked to Daniel, and he said that he was thrilled to death because we volunteered to keep it up and to seasonally plant and maintain that corner there. It's between scarlet hips and the hardies. And a lot of times, the trees and everything get covered over and you can't even really hardly see it. But we have a group of people who are willing to, who have volunteered to keep it up throughout the season. We know that there's a free concert sign that hangs down there when they do have the concerts during the summer, and we were hoping to be able to put something on that existing sign. I understand that there may be, you know, some issues along on whether you can hang anything or not, but Daniel had mentioned to me, he said to be sure to tell you all that he would be thrilled to have us do that, and that the sign needs a little bit of work anyway, and he was going to maybe eventually request to get a brand-new one anyway, and perhaps we could be part of that. In the meantime, all I have is a piece I'd like to hand out, and it's from American Bloom, which Robbie suggested we look into for grants and things of that late as we go further down the project. And in it, it basically talks about the fact that garden districts and areas like this are, can be a moneymaker for bringing tourists and people in and other groups and purchasing housing in that area, of which, if you don't mind, can I pass it out? Our property values have increased immensely since I moved there two years ago. And with that, our last house in the neighborhood had only stayed on the market for about three weeks. So they have done very well, and the whole neighborhood, one by one, is working to better itself, and we do appreciate your help. He also mentioned the fact that the community park has been having some issues with people trying to stay overnight and that type of thing down there, and they've been running them off. And so I told him that we were on the move to try to be a neighborhood watch committee, and we're looking into that as well, and this Sunday we'll discuss that with the people that come to the potluck and see what, if there's enough interest to warrant it, and if so, maybe we can help out with that situation too, because we would like to be able to use it, you know, and turn this whole neighborhood around to be actually Barstown's Garden District. It is the first subdivision in the city, and Dixie's been very helpful with helping us get history and that type of thing so we can move forward in all aspects. But that's our goal, and we would appreciate any help you all can give, and thank you.
Debbie, just to give the council some background on the sign part is, we don't really have a firm answer on how we can make it work within our current sign ordinance. We don't know that there is an exact prohibition against it being added to our city sign. There's already a community sign that I think Debbie's, might be correct, that'd be a logical location for it. So Rochelle is checking into it, and she's talking with KLC, and I don't know if she's bombing and arguing with it or not yet, but so unless the council sees it, reads it, I think it's wonderful that you all have taken this initiative on, creating a garden district. And those of you who were campaigning last fall, I'm sure when you went knocking on doors in the Henrytown, if you had been campaigning in previous elections, you can see there's a transformation going on.
Yes.
I'm old enough to remember that neighborhood when I was five years old, and here I am 60 years later. I've seen the transformation when it was a new neighborhood, post-World War II, early 50s, most of those homes were built in the early 50s, or a lot of them were, and now the transformation back to a really very pretty and enhanced neighborhood, so it's great what you all are doing.
Thank you. Well, we have also been encouraging realtors to come and take a look because it's been a lot of rental property over the years, and as you said, some of those landlords have gotten older and maybe aren't as interested in, you know, dealing with it on a daily basis. And as that's been happening, young couples have been moving in and getting it and getting involved. And it's amazing going door to door with this little potluck, people have lived there 17 years and don't know their neighbors, you know, and they've said, "Gosh, I'll, I'll come, I want to meet everybody." So it's been, it's been a good thing to be involved with. I've been very pleased, and we've been very thankful of the support that you all have given us, and The Standard did a couple of articles on us, and it meant the world to them. We made copies and made sure they saw it, so no, anything that you all can do, we appreciate it.
We've got to work simply to make this happen, but we'll keep the courage and we'll all keep up the good work and make a difference.
Well, thanks. Thank you very much.
I mean, with the council, I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure. I grew up in Henrytown.
Did you?
Yeah, some really good memories, my gosh, yes.
Have you been through lately?
Oh, yeah. I go through it all the time.
I'm a Paulion Avenue resident, former resident. You were a kid, yeah.
It is amazing how many people have told us that they grew up here, and, you know, I've been trying to find as much history as I can. The library's been great help, and too, but it's, some big names lived down there when they were young and wild.
I was always saying, like, baseball field, they had a home road fence because there was a fence underneath the water tire in the cemetery. It wasn't very big playing the home road fence. You had to really be pretty exact on where you hit it because it was probably only about 40 or 30 yards wide.
Well, I've heard about them taking the sleds and sliding down on Allison and about the big swimming pool that was here. All this is way before me, and I'm a lot older than you, but I hadn't lived here that long. And then they're talking about chasing each other through the cemetery. Those are the stories I like.
Joe backed up the cemetery.
Yeah, we did. I don't want to scare any of your people off up there, but I know there's been talk of Henrytown, or maybe portions of it, trying to get on the, in the historic district in the overlay area. Has that ever been brought up or?
No.
I mean, there's a lot of homes, obviously, almost every one of them would qualify, but, you know, there's a lot of red tape involved to get that done.
I would suspect that if we get in charge of garden district and we get this done, this will be a really big step forward, and then we'll probably go on our rest for a while.
There's really nice renovations up there, no question about that.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Joe, your, that means a lot coming from you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't, I wasn't raised in Henrytown, but when I first moved here, I lived there for several years before we moved someplace else.
Have you been through Brooklyn?
Yes, I was just through there a couple days ago.
Good. What'd you think?
It really looks nice.
It's looking a lot better. Well, we appreciate your interest.
Mayor, we ask you something. Sure. I want to thank you because you have certainly taken the lead on this and just done so much with your group, so that's hats off to you for doing all that. And from a real estate perspective, when people used to say, "What do you think about this house and this house and this house?", once you kind of said that's in Henrytown, they were just like, "Oh, never mind", but it's totally turned around now.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, for buyers, not just investors.
Good, good. Well, that's our goal. We're hoping that a lot will end up being owned.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, next item I would like to put on, bring up on the agenda a little bit forward is, I have Shawna Sheckels here with Against Spring Haven Domestic Violence Program. Would you like to address the council on your all's request for your donation request for $2,000?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Shawna Sheckels, and I am the legal court advocate for Spring Haven Domestic Violence Program. Nelson County falls into one of our eight counties in the Lincoln Trail ad district, so I have an office here, I'm one of the outreach people, so I have an office here in Spalding Hall, and I provide advocacy and support for victims of domestic violence in the circuit court and district court system that cannot afford attorneys. And we were asking for a donation from the city since we provide that service in the city. We run into some problems because our shelter location is in Elizabeth Town, so all the eight counties, all victims that are in need of shelter, emergency shelter, have to come to E-Town. And the problem that I run into here is with transportation and with, you know, accommodations for a night or two. And with the transportation, the city police department and the sheriff's department, they are really, really good to us about transporting victims to the shelter, but, you know, sometimes the timing is off, and they have something else to do, I can't, I won't transport in my private vehicle because, you know, I don't know their perpetrators, I don't know what they're capable of, and so I don't want to be in that. It's a safety concern. And so we were asking the city for a donation just for Nelson County. It will not benefit any other victims. The other counties, you know, they take care of their own like I want us to do ours. For transportation, to actually have a taxi cab take the person from, say, the police department, not at their home, we're not going to try to put anybody in any type of danger, but to have them picked up and transported to shelters so that our law enforcement wouldn't necessarily have to be involved in that. Now, if they're able to, and they're always willing, that's fine, but when we run into some of those circumstances, sometimes our hands are tied. And then with the accommodations, St. Vincent's DePaul has helped victims before, but they close at four o'clock. I mean, domestic violence doesn't stop at four o'clock in the afternoon. And we have a homeless shelter, and we have a room in the inn, but they are not, for lack of a better word, qualified to deal with victims of domestic violence, and, you know, they say, well, they can't come and stay here because, you know, they're a victim and we don't know about the perpetrators and all that. So it just, it just gets into a whole lot, and I don't think that people should be turned away. They're already in a, in a situation, and I don't think that they should be revictimized because of money and logistics. So if we could possibly have that donation of $2,000, then that will help the victims here in Nelson County. And we're the only state-certified agency in central Kentucky, so we are the shelter for this area. So we service Nelson, Harden, Larue, Breckenridge, Grayson, Marion, and Washington. I don't want to shout somebody. I've only got seven, but it's number one. So we service all of those counties, so we have a large operation alone in Nelson County from October until today. We have served 749 victims of domestic violence in Nelson County alone. Harden County outweighs us. I'm the advocate for Harden County also, so Harden County outweighs us by about 560 victims. I, you know, I will retire from this job long before domestic violence is stacked out, and it's really, really sad, but it actually, it happens here, and it happens a lot with 749 victims, women, children, and men. So nobody is susceptible to, you know, not having violence in their life. So if the city would be willing to help us out with that, I would greatly appreciate it. Next month is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I bought y'all a present. It's not a bribe, it's a present.
They're likely to take one back to you.
I'll just take one.
Shawna, is this the second year for this request? Did you do one last year?
No, this is the first year.
First year.
I didn't know that I could. So when I found out I could, I did. Thank you.
Shawna, one question.
Yes.
As far as, it's a fantastic program, and thank you for being involved in this very much-needed thing in our community. The money that you're asking for from the city, would it primarily be used for the transportation of city residents to your shelter, or does it go to the shelter itself?
No. This money would be used strictly for residents of Nelson County. So that, that's just, you know, citywide, Nelson County-wide. Thank you.
Shawna, and Shawna and I had talked about that because I said, you know, I want to make sure, you know, understanding that, not that we don't care about them, but we want to make sure we're benefiting our community. I know that you specified, and I don't know if there is another taxi service and then the Holiday Inn, can we make it more general to say transportation and a hotel?
Yeah.
Because I wanted to seem like we're favoring, you know, we've got four new hotels coming.
Right. It's just where I can get someone in at two o'clock in the morning because I'm going to be the one that they call.
Right.
And so it's where I can get the person in the quickest and the safest.
We may want to, whoever may consider making the motion, we may want to broaden it to say, you know, for accommodations and transportation, just to leave it broader for use of it.
That's fine.
You know, should one of the new hotels, you know, build a relationship with them or wherever, right?
It doesn't matter, as long as the person is safe and out of danger here and discounted, that is what I'm interested in. Do I have any more questions?
Anyone else have any questions on this question?
I've been speaking all day. Last Thursday, I did two extra.
I'm not shocked, she's just being in control.
You got my last name, it's Shackle. I saw 219 freshmen in Nelson County last Thursday, so that's what I said, class after class, I did seven classes. So are there any more questions?
I'm doing career day tomorrow. Took a bus ride last week, all the Cincinnati. Yeah, the question's, if not, we do have the funds available in our community development grant fund, so I would entertain a motion to approve the request for transportation and housing for the Spring Haven Domestic Violence Program.
If I'm in order, first of all, Shawna, you're used to being in charge anyway, so we're used to that. I'd like to make a motion that we donate $2,000 to the Spring Haven Domestic Violence Program.
For transportation.
For transportation and accommodation.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Williams, second with Councilwoman Hart, and the discussion. All in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the next item we have is under bids and contracts. Just I'll start with Jessica. I think we were up on the Keys Architect proposal for the Public Works Building.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In your packet, we have in front of you a proposal from Keys Architects to do a design for our Public Works Building. This, I think we talked about this around budget time, like the Public Works, water, sewer, street, and garbage departments are in need of a new shop, mechanic building, some storage and some offices. And this is the proposal to kind of get us moving to help us find and design a building that most fits our needs. Keys has done some similar types of projects for some other communities, and we would like to, the council to recommend our approval of their proposal so that we can kind of initiate that work and get started on that.
We're currently using Keys on the new police department renovation, and Keys also worked on the recent renovation at the amphitheater, so I think they're based out of Louisville, they're pretty well local, kind of doing a lot of work for some local contractors as well, so. If anybody's got any questions on the details, David, if you've got anything.
No, I looked over and it looks, everything looks in order and looks like it's a fair pricing for the design documents and deliverables.
It's first part of the, you know, I think we've got budgets of $800,000, I think, for this building, so, you know, we've got to, this is, we've got to start here before we get to the, site work can start, so. Refresh my memory, where is the Public Works? It's out off Kelly Drive. Okay, we toured it, or we went by it or something. Well, the garbage truck, the lake and cable parks, and all that.
Thank you.
Dump trucks, salt spreaders and all that is location. And this will be located on some of the new property that we acquired from the Barstown Shopping Center, or no, it was out. Hubbard and.
It's adjacent in the cars of the Pajama Drive, back behind Kroger.
Is it that back part, that back part of the?
It's part of that, I think it's a six-acre tract, I think we got there. Yes, so part of the off pageant. Okay, if there's no other question, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the proposal for Keys Architects for $23,000, $425,000, is that correct, Jessica? I think I'm seeing. $23,000, $425,000.
I think it's $20,000.
$23,000. Motion to approve the proposal for Keys Architects.
So moved there.
Motion, Councilman Oze, second with Councilman Hibs, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed, motion's carried. All right, Jessica, then, I think the next one would be also with the change order on the Round Creek Wake Water System, previous for the Town Creek.
Smith Contracting is the contractor for this particular project, contract number one. In doing the, in the construction process, when they were pouring additional walls and demolishing a portion of the very old headworks, it was found that the planned elevations that we had on record drawing did not match the actual field-conditioned depth, so there was a discrepancy of five and a half inches between the existing finished floor headworks elevation where all of the flow coming into the plan is and the actual plan grade. So that made everything be fucked, it messed everything up with respect to the equipment and the size of the gates and everything. So in order to, the most cost-effective method to resolve that discrepancy was just to pour a small concrete, fill that bottom in by about five and a half inches to make it match the planned elevation. And there's, the only other part of that change was there's one box that we had to make some tweaks to and to help make sure that the gates could be properly lowered and raised without, easier with actual manwells, you know, to raise them. So the overall change was $4,300, and I've reviewed it as well as the design engineer, and we feel that that is a fair, a fair price.
Anybody have any questions, Jessica, on that?
I just have one thing to add, and it really doesn't have anything to do with the project, it has to do with the, the way that we look at these change orders and such. This is really just kind of a question for the council and for Jessica. I know it would make it a lot easier for me when we're doing, when we're looking over our materials and such, if something like that could refer back to our, the line item and the budget that we have budgeted for those projects. Is that something that's possible?
Uh.
As part of this, what comes to us and our information. I mean, a lot of times we have to go back and kind of, kind of look at the budget and say, okay, where were we with this, and how much are we going to be close to going where were we with this, and how much are we going to be close to going over?
And in this particular project, we have, because this is a KIA funded project, and we have, it's a capital improvement project, this overall construction was 1.3 million for the bid.
Yeah, that's it.
But there's $25,000 in our overall budget, or more, in contingencies to help accommodate for these things that we know that are going to come up. So, generally, if there's something that's going to push over what we have the funds to cover, I'll try to bring that to your attention, and if not, I kind of, I don't usually do that, but if it's helpful to you, I can do a little summary.
It doesn't have anything to do with this project, obviously, but any project in general that we're looking for change orders and things, it would be handy even just to have the page of the budget line, maybe, okay, here's where we are on our budget, if that's easy enough to do.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Okay. Is there any other questions? I'd ask for a motion to approve the change order for the Smith Contractors, including $4,300 for the changes to the Round Creek wastewater project.
So moved there.
Motion by Councilman Doz, is there a second?
Second there.
Second by Councilman Williams, is there any other discussion?
I just have a question, what's the amount on it?
Well, $4,300, I think the change order you got in your packet is.
$33,000.
That was an earlier one.
Oh.
We've already approved, this is the second one, I think.
Yeah.
I don't have that one, I guess.
I have the earlier one, too. That's one of the reasons that I thought of this, the reason I asked that question.
So, this is for $4,300, per how Jessica explained it. Same project, just a smaller, a lot smaller amount.
Yeah.
We've already previously approved that other one.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Let's see, all right, Jessica, you're still on deck here. Previous to Blueberry Alley. They're getting easier, though.
They are, they are. Hopefully, you see in your packet, a letter of request from Mr. Samuels, who is, has purchased property at 207 South First Street, that has frontage on First and on Blueberry Alley. That portion of Blueberry Alley is unimproved, it's just a grass alley to date, and he is requesting to improve the alley and utilize the alley to access this new project, or this, I think it's a duplex, or a home that he's building on First. So, the access would be off of that alley, and he would enter the rear of his property and garage from the alley versus having to drive off of First Street. So, that's why he brought this request to you. This is kind of our standard practice, that we do give permission for private individuals to make those improvements, and we oversee those improvements, and he has permitted, has an encroachment permit, so we plan to oversee those improvements, and once it's completed, then the city would, might take over that improvement.
This is just like some of the little reasonables we just did, off of Flagway, and behind the bed and breakfast office, Stephen Foster, and some of those other alleys. Do you know if it's going to be gravel or blacktop?
I'm thinking at this point in time, he's proposing a blacktop. He had originally thought maybe it would be concrete, but I think he's considering blacktop at this point.
Still the same stipulations as far as the city still has full use of the alley, they can't build, it roach upon the alley in any way with the structures.
We went over that, there is only 10 feet there, there's utilities in the alley, so all of those things will need to be taken into consideration.
So, Jessica, a little bit delayed this project, anyway, I know it's higher than the street, so is he going to be able to grate that off, to get his drainage going to the street? Is there going to be any issues there?
We've talked about the drainage, and we've mentioned, I've mentioned to him that there may need to do, as some other alleys are, where it's actually concave, and provide that, you know, means for drainage, and because he doesn't have, you know, civil engineering drainage plan for, you know, the home lot, to make sure he's looking at all of those things, and before he pours, you know, we would have to make sure that we're approving the location of that, making sure he's in the alley with the entrance, and that that's being taken care of. So, he's just getting started, so I'm hoping that he's, once he kind of gets that building elevation set, he'll kind of be able to see and direct how that's happening, but.
I think the sewer manhole actually could actually dictate some of that.
The manhole is actually behind, he's not actually improving it quite that far. He's stopping short, from what I was saying, but we'll look at it as we go, and if it has to be lower, he'll have to lower that, you know, that is part of the problem.
Any other questions on this request? As I say, we need to have it approved, approved it easy in the past, so I ask for a motion then to approve the request of Kenny McSamuels to approve this Blueberry Alley.
I'll make the motion to approve the request by Kenny McSamuels to approve Blueberry Alley's access to his property, or the alley known as Blueberry Alley.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second by Councilwoman Hart, and the discussion. Seeing none, and all in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. And let the record show, Councilman Buckman said.
It's in the pie.
Motion is carried. Jeff Miller, Electric Department, Poll Inspection Services bid.
Yes, we've received bids for poll inspection service. I had to just check to see what decay there is, what the strengths of them are, what's good, what's bad, what we can restore, and also, it's providing a pole tagging system, which we've never had, and, you know, help out in the future with some of the other things that will be coming in with the outage management system and stuff. So, the bid come in at 45,562,50, I think we budgeted 45,000. You will see an additional cost of 60,200. That was just to do the entire system of poles that we have in all three substations, but we only intended to do one substation this year, and after we finish this project, this will, the conversion, this is how we'll determine what we need to do to keep the infrastructure up. And so, it's the first time it's been done. So, we're going to do the pool substation, so everything that's inside of the pool substationary, which is about 1,000 poles. So, they'll do different sound and bores and visual inspection, they'll do a digital picture of it, DPS, and don't have to excavate around to see where if there's rot underneath ground, and so, it takes that, going into the backyards, and then calling in the 811s, so it's quite a big project, but through about 1,000 poles.
So, you said the, there again, a 45,000, and 562 is closer, which you ought to have.
Yes, we budgeted 45,500 over what we had budgeted.
I can tell you, having drove around town the night of our last major storm, and 70 mile an hour winds, and I'm not an expert, that's why we need to bring in an expert, but we've got a lot of aged poles that are subject to damage in storms like that, so this is, I think, a very timely project to identify those poles that need to be replaced and upgraded.
So, when I come here in '93, we was doing a contract in Henry County area, and we was replacing some poles and changing the qualities back then, and I questioned Jeff Mills, why are we changing more of these poles, they're bad? And he said, you know, well, I got so much to do. Well, then poles are still there.
So. Are we, are we voting then on the 45, or the total amount?
The 45 is what we're asking for. The total amount is just so that we could see about getting everything else tagged, but the south end, since we're doing all that and the change outs, we don't want to do the south end or do anything down there. And we have digitally photo all the poles in the south end anyway, so it's just got to figure the breakdown sheet before we do.
So, the option calls is not actually for replacement, it's for tagging and.
It was just that they.
Cataloging.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, or Jeff, on this bid? It looks like it's pretty much in line with the budget, which is, you know, that is a pretty good estimate on your own part. That's many months later, it came in that close to do this project, so I'd ask for a motion to approve the bid from Osmos, is that correct?
Yes.
$45,562.50 for the inspection of our poll inspection bid.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hibs, is there a second? Second by Councilman Doz, any other discussion?
Can we approve that since that is over the budget?
Yes.
Over what?
Yeah, I mean, we always amend the budget throughout the year, so, yes, we can't do that. They've got, you know, electric.
It's in a big line item, so that $500 will never be seen as big as that line item is, so. It's more $500.
Electric part of the budget is about $17 million, so I think it's.
So, it's going to fall in that $17 million?
There's more line items than just this, they're in that line item, so, it's not, but that's a good question to ask, we're not. So, motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Now, we've got the HRB recommendations and summaries, so I guess, Audrey, you ready to do the work?
I'm ready, there's not too many of them, actually. COA 19-163 Bourbon Capital Brewing LLC, applicants owners propose to demolish part of the structure at 112 West Flagway Avenue. Recommendation, approval to demolish the proposed portions of the building. COA 19-164 Sheila Hurst applicant owner requests to paint the trim at 126 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed paint color with the following conditions. Conditions, the cornice above the window will be painted a lighter color to be staff approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 19-165 Michael Katz applicant owner requests to install a historic plaque at 202 South Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed plaque. COA 19-166 David and Gail Hobbs applicants owners request to install a sidewalk at 216 East Flagway Avenue. Recommendation, approval for the proposed sidewalk. COA 19-167 Holden Willet applicant owner requests to add a sidewalk at 206 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval for the proposed sidewalk. COA 19-168 Michael and Susan Sloan applicants owners request to relocate a patio at 205 South Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the new proposed patio. COA 19-169 Mike and Sheila Abel applicants owners request to install a fence at 113 East Broadway Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed fence with the following conditions. Conditions, that the final state pillar for the fence will be staff approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 19-171 213 Barstown LLC applicants owners request to paint the structure at 213 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval for the proposed paint color with the following conditions. Conditions, the unpainted brick portion on the side of the building will be sent to Frankfurt for clarification, and then pending their decision, will be staff approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 19-172 Kelsey Hamilton applicant owner requests to install a new roof at 218 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approves, the approval for the proposed roofing material. COA 19-173 Spalding Hall applicant, Archdiocese of Louisville owner requests to, approval to remove eight trees at 114 North Fifth Street. Recommendation, approval to remove the trees with the following conditions. Conditions, only trees presented on the map that were number 10, 1, 13, and 18 would be removed. All trees would be replanted back, including those previously removed by the end of the year, and similar trees of the same approximate size and type would be planted back in the same location. COA 19-175 Ross May applicant owner requests to add tables and chairs to the rear and front of the building at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed tables, chairs, and lights as presented in the application. COA 19-176 Rick and Natalie McKay applicants owners request to build a detached storage building at 214 East Flagway Avenue. Recommendation, approval for the proposed shed at the rear of the property.
Okay. Any need for recusers or anything?
Come on.
Which one?
The very first.
Oh, yeah, okay. Just like you. We'll take that one up first. So, I would need a motion to approve COA 19-163 as recommended by HRB.
So.
Motion by Councilman Williams, and second by Councilman Buckman. And the discussion, all in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Okay, Councilman Doz, I get it. Okay, so now, it looks like we need a motion then to approve the other recommendation for HRB with condition, that would be COA 19-164, 165, 166, 167, 168, 169, 171, 172, 173, 175, and 176.
So moved there.
Motion to approve all those with the conditions. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Councilman Buckman, any other discussion?
Do you want one thing, yes? On Spalding Hall, he didn't say how big the trees would be whenever replanted. The only thing I can look, said, make them equal, of equal size to the ones that they have to plant to replace, and ones that are already missing. That's all I could get.
What that means is the diameter of a whole grown tree, is it three foot, three foot or?
It was worded a little funny.
I'd say it's to be the same as the ones that are already planted, the smaller.
Right, that's the way I understood it. The antraga was, it has to be approved by the staff court, by Boucher. And then, I said, does that mean two inches or three inches? She said, well, I would, I said, you know, two inch trees is always a healthy tree to plant, so she said, well, I would expect to be that size or larger. So, I just wanted to make that statement, that, you know, we don't want to come out with a tree this big.
We might want to clarify that in the, you know, in our motion, that we would want, you know, maybe we would need to deal with that one separately to clean that up a little bit, does that make sense?
But I'm just telling you what she said, I don't know.
Well, that's not, I don't think, I don't think that was specified in the recommendations, although it did say, it just said to be planted back, so.
Well, it'd be planted back the same approximate size as the previous.
Which, of course, the trees they cut down are.
That's not what it's trying to say. We know from a practical standpoint, they're either two or three inch diameter trees, when you put new trees back in.
Yeah, they might be three feet across.
Do we need to add that to the conditions?
I think we should, then, Mayor, to make that clear, because we don't want to have, we don't want them to be in a tough position if it's not clear, you know, us being a position.
So, we would add, in addition, on COA 19-173, the conditions that the size of the trees that are being planted in place would have to be a dime, or two inch dime, or larger.
No, two inch.
Yeah, that's what I've always seen planted in new, in plantings. So, we've added that to our motion, we have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, put that out, wait. Okay. Next, Rotary Angels Kids Day, that date is September the 26th, it's coming up on us, September 26th?
Thursday.
Coming up on us pretty quick, you've got a request, and this is an annual event that the Rotary sponsors, Kids Day out in Front Lawn and City Hall, so you've got your letter there requesting it, and you just need to formally approve that for them.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Rotary's request for their Kids Day.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, uh, so we have a, any, any comments from the council members, anything coming up, or any thing that needs to be addressed? Councilman Hart, you'll be going to KOC after this.
I am, I am. And also, the deadline for our essay contest is this Friday, and we're going to have probably around 50 to 60 essays. So I'm enlisted Randy Patrick's help, based on his schedule, but he'd be a good person to help judge those, so he's...
Just 50 he has to read?
Fifty to sixty.
He's not doing that.
I estimate two hours, I can't imagine that there'll be, you know, more than a page or so, so, um, he's, he's going to help me with that, but if I need more, I'll certainly call on everyone.
Okay, thank you. You okay with that, Randy?
Sure.
He's already said yes.
Okay, we have Secretary D for Lawrence.
I'm six.
What's that?
I'm six.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
A minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did recall that, thank you. We have to approve the city council revenue meeting on September 10th, do that by unanimous consent, unless there's any changes or corrections, and then also the property tax hearing on September 10th. Do that by unanimous consent. Thank you, Roland. Said I wanted to hear, I forgot.
Watch out.
All right, now we'll go to Secretary D's, we have two gray sites for Lawrence and Lydian, and we'll also approve that by unanimous consent. And then on announcements, I think most of you already have seen that, you know, Inewak has announced a layoff, I think right now they're talking about 74 individuals, 69 workers and plant workers and I think five management. I just wanted to kind of give you an update, you know, Lake and Trail Area Development, Jackie Masterson, who's a Barstown resident, heads up their rapid response team, and she's already on top of this, where they'll be coming out, and they're going to be conducting information sessions for the employees on September the 24th and the 26th, at nine and one o'clock. So that's to help them get their paperwork going, to apply for unemployment, but also any opportunities to apply for other, they try to work with other businesses here in the community that are in need of employees, and then any training that they might need, retraining to get them ready for opportunities in other work, so she, we really work, you know, American Readings was 450 people, Jackie headed that up for Lake and Trail back there, much larger job, but it, you know, it went really well, and I know many of those who were still wanting to work got placed, so I think, hopefully the same will happen for these individuals, so, just wanted to give you all an update on that. And then I did ask Chief Manley, Chief Cresson, to kind of give me a debriefing of the Bourbon Festival weekend, from the standpoint of public safety and so forth, and happy to report that, you know, we didn't really have any major, major incidents. The one thing some of you may not know, that on events like this, the fire department, with the help of the police department, do go in the establishments to make sure that their capacity levels are in compliance, safe, and so forth, and Chief and his staff reported that all our downtown bars and restaurants that were doing a great job Saturday night, they went on, they're going on the hour, and they were posting people, they were having lines waiting to come in, but after the Bourbon Festival shut down here, there was a mass accident, and they all went towards the city municipal lot, and those establishments that were still open, and they got overwhelmed, quite frankly. And to the credit of the owners and managers, two of them shut down rather than, by 12:30. One even asked for assistance from the fire and police department to help them with shutting down and clearing the property, because there were just far more people than they could handle, and there was hundreds of people gathered in the municipal lot, so. Lesson learned, I think, we said, that great job on the part of the bar owners, the restaurant owners, trying to make it work, we probably need to work towards getting Bourbon Festival's shutdown time to coincide with the shutdown time of the bars, so that there's not that higher difference there, that some of those people still want to party, and they converge all on one area, the closest area to it, so. I've already shared that with some of the Bourbon Festival people earlier today, and I think, we think that'll help a lot, so, that kind of cover it. And so it, it worked out, and hats off to the owners who said, rather than try to stand there and battle all the people trying to get in, they just said, we're shutting down, because it's just not, they couldn't, they couldn't handle the crowds, and it's unsafe and so forth, so it worked out, so. Okay, um, we're going to go into executive session, as I stated before, the meeting, and just, so obviously, the people in the audience, and the media, I don't expect to, us to come out of either one of the sessions and have any votes or more discussions, but I do want to read a press release prior to us going into this, maybe on behalf of the media, and I think, Randy, you have copies for this?
Yes, I have copies for it.
But I'm going to read this before, and we're going to go in under, as I say, two things. We'll go into the first one, then we'll come out of that session, and then we'll go back into regular session, then vote, go in, have a motion to go into the second session after that. But this press release is dated today, September 24, 2019, it's from the office of the mayor, and it reads, "Late Wednesday evening, September 18th, I was advised of potential irregularities in the city's finance department. Investigation immediately followed, and by Friday afternoon, September 20th, all funds were accounted for, subject to further investigation and annual audit, which is ongoing. And due to, due to the fact that it's an pending investigation, I cannot comment any further at this time." So I wanted to read that on behalf of the media that's here, but then you get a copy of this, but, you know, I don't want you to spend the rest of the night here waiting, if you don't want to, you're welcome to, we're happy to let you stay, and when we come out, I just don't anticipate we'll be having any more discussion or votes coming out of these executive session, and obviously, those of you others in the audience, probably don't want to sit around and wait all night, so. So, okay, I need a motion then to go out of regular session and go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61-8101B, which is deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency, when publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property. So, and a motion by Councilman Hart, second by Councilman Donalds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are going out of regular session, we'll be going into executive session, so if everybody has a chance to. Clear the room. Unless anybody has anything else to bring before the council, is there anything? If not, we'll ask for motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Donalds, second by Councilman Buckland, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we adjourn. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jim, for your patience.